Our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I ask if we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our public comment. And this section of the agenda is reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. We ask that you keep comments to three minutes or less. And also, if you could please give us your name and address. And do the fact that this is all by virtual, if you could type comment in the comment box or in the chat box.
There are no comments at this time.
Okay, great. Moving on, our next sections are good to know. Andy, do you have anything for that for us?
We do not have anybody this meeting for good to know.
Okay, great, thank you. Our next section would be...
Town managers' report.
Thank you.
So I like how you're moving this meeting right along, Mr. Chairman. So I feel it imperative to let you know 99% of what we're working on at the Board of Selectment now is what the town manager's office is working on. It's mostly COVID-19 between all the departments, employees either being exposed or coming back with a positive test or finding out that somebody they were with later on had tested positive. So it's an everyday event, sometimes takes up most of the day. I mean, Sharon can contest to this. One of our Public Works personnel went to their doctor just for something different and got exposed at the doctor's office, and now he's quarantined. Unfortunately, downstairs, we've had an issue. So our assessors, tax collectors offices are working remotely from home. They've been exposed. So it's an ongoing daily event to make sure we follow the protocols that we're supposed to. So that's 99% of every day what we're doing. Other than that, we are looking at the CIP budgets. And we're going to start sitting down with the department heads. And then on Monday after this meeting, we have a staff meeting. They will be presenting or asked to present within the next two weeks the department budgets. With that being said, we're going to have a joint meeting at some point with the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed to have a January six-month review of where we are in this year's budget, if we can do that in this COVID-19, and see how we're looking moving forward in the next six months of the year. So working on that. There's some good news, it's preliminary, but I think we may have a buyer for the barn over by the Mac McCorson subdivision. We're working on a possible venture there. That will be coming in front of you later on, won't be at this meeting. But that's good news. We've been working on that for quite a while. So that would help that section of the center of town out. And Mac has agreed to what we're proposing to do. So we'll keep you posted as soon as I can. We've been working with the Parks and Recs Department, and we're moving forward with the protocol on hiring a new Parks and Rec director. That's been taking up a little bit of time. Dan Greenwood, our resident trooper, I think I had mentioned this before. He's going to be retiring. That has now come pretty close to fruition, so we're doing a transition. I've been in touch with Troop K. There's five finalists, resident troopers that are in the running for Hebron, so I'm going to be having conversations with the State Police next week. And hopefully, we come up with a good candidate to replace them and get Mark a new boss. Also, working with the Fire Department. We're in the process of looking for a new professional firefighter, EMT, that's also a maintainer. One of them left and went to a bigger city or town, right down the street from his house. So we're going to miss him, but hopefully, we get somebody good to replace him. Also, working with Nick. Unfortunately, Nick's been out under the weather, or I would have had a more precise report on where we are with hiring the part-time EMTs. We're close to that. I think they're close to testing the people. There's a test they put them through, and I'll bring that up at the next meeting. But we're very close to moving that forward as well. Subsequently, we're working with a developer, very preliminary, but looking at the Riffkin property with a firm, which is from the other side of the country, or California. But they sent us a proposal on possibly coming in and doing the project and funding it for 30 years with a payback. So Mike O'Leary, myself, and a few people have been preliminary conversations with them. As that progresses, we will definitely bring the Board of Selectment into the loop. But this is very preliminary at the time. But it looks promising, and we'll see. I mean, the only thing is, they do have an office in Boston, but they're based out of California. But they gave us a very interesting proposal. And as we read through it, if it's anything that looks like that might come to somewhat of fruition that we would want to entertain, it would definitely be in front of the Board of Select. I'm still working on regional shelter, the generator. As late as today, we figured out the size of the generator won't fit where the existing generator is at Ram. So they're just working on the final points, and that's so we can give an accurate price. I've been in touch with Kathy Austin and a couple of the grant writers. So we're ready to move as soon as we get that number, to try to see if we can't get that funded. I'm also working with the Building Committee on the library roof. The gentleman's expected to come out on the 19th, or at least the week after, to cut into that roof, whether permitting, to see exactly what's there. So we can give a recommendation, write the RFP, so that'll be ready in the spring to move forward with replacement of that roof, finally. Also, as Danny, you well know, we've been working on an AHM agreement that took quite a bit of work. We worked on it as late as yesterday to get the update, and we sent it out to all the Selectmen. So hopefully, you all got that. We have our insurance consortium meeting on January 21st, where we'll be getting our new preliminary numbers for budget. We're hoping that we're going to be in good shape. It's been that way for the last couple of years, so I don't see why it wouldn't. But no sense giving you any false hope until we get the numbers. So that'll be next, I'm sorry, January 21st. And then last, well, second to last, we're working with the EDC, and we've come up with some new objectives for the new EDC coordinator position that we're going to be looking out for. And we've also reached out to the Wyndham Chamber of Commerce, which has presented a proposal on doing some of those services. We just want to find out what they're looking to charge us on certain things. We can pick and choose, which we probably will do. We'll have some tasks for our person that we hire. But if we can pay Wyndham to do some of the other tasks, it might be beneficial. So I'm working with the EDC Commission on that. And we've sent a letter to the Wyndham Chamber to give us some pricing. And then we'll come up with an RFP for July 1, where we will hopefully have somebody in place. The present EDC person can still vie for that position, but he knows we're going to, you know, put that back out, so. And then last but not least, under correspondence, the Connecticut Water Company is looking for a representative for the Connecticut Water Committee. Your community does not yet have a representative on the Connecticut Water Customer Advisory Council, CAC. But I wanted to make you aware, our next scheduled meeting is January 6 at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Among other things, we'll be discussing our planned rate case filing that will notify you about early December. So we've got to come up with somebody that the Board of Selectmen thinks would be a good representative on that. Of course, we're not going to make that meeting yesterday. But moving forward, we probably should appoint somebody or at least start to solicit somebody for that position. And that's all I have.
I have a couple of questions, Andy. One, are we going to be doing an exit interview with Tim?
With, I'm sorry, with who?
The firefighter, the left.
Yes, I did. We did one with him. Once again, union position, bigger city, right down the street from his house. He didn't want to leave Hebron. But due to the travel time that he lost time with his family, and then the gas, the fuel, and the extra money he's going to receive were the reasons. He was very happy with the community and how he was treated in this position. He hated to leave, but, you know, right down the street from his house, he couldn't refuse it.
And then I was asked on the tax payments. If people put in and put on the payment that they need a receipt, how is that being handled? Somebody generating a receipt to mail back to the taxpayers?
Yeah, just because the offices are closed, we're fielding all the calls, emails, and phone messages. Anybody who wants any of that stuff, they just have to request that, leave the pertinent mailing information or email address, and we'll send that to them.
Great, thank you. Okay, our next item. I don't have the agenda in front of me. I guess it would be our update on the COVID-19 long-term recovery.
Yeah, so once again, I kind of touched on that without, you know, letting anybody know who the persons are. We've been having, you know, issues with our employees, whether it be the employee or being exposed to somebody that tested positive. Luckily, the Public Works Department is being held whole, and weather's holding out. But the town hall itself, again, had an issue downstairs, as I stated earlier. I've been in contact with the superintendents. Mark can contest to this. Ram is remote, but the superintendent at the elementary schools and the Board of Ed felt pertinent that the kids go back to school on Monday after the holiday. And that is in concurrence with the health director. They feel the younger kids are different than the older kids in the middle school and high school, and they feel the younger kids are safer in the school atmosphere than they are being home. So I looked into that, and that's how that decision was formulated. I'm not sure if Donna wants to add anything to that.
No, I think you've covered it all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is approve the AHM local government cooperative venue agreement.
Did you just want to touch base as to what the changes were from what had been presented before? This new agreement, again...
Dan, can I jump in? I kind of jumped the gun. There was a second part to that agenda item, which Donna has up, is the update of the Hebron Open for Business task force, and I apologize for that.
Nope, nope, okay, that's fine.
Peter Casper, I don't have anything to add at this point. We haven't met, we're meeting next week, and I'll provide an update at our next meeting.
So what I'll do is I'm going to read the motion, then we can discuss it. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen endorse it, approve the local government cooperative venture agreement between Andover, Hebron, Marlboro Youth and Family Services, AKA AHM Youth and Family Services Incorporated, and the towns of Andover, Hebron, Marlboro, Connecticut dated, I guess it would be January 7, 2021.
It's January 6th. The date is January 6th.
Ah, okay, okay, January 6th, thank you. You know, in following this, you know, we'd had a proposal at our last meeting. There was a lot of discussion with the fact that there was information not in there. And so it ended up going back to the drawing boards. They've done a tremendous job in producing this document. I personally feel we should approve it. I'm going to let Andy discuss it more, because he's been in the thick of it. Andy?
Well, once again, you know, every couple of years, this comes up to be revisited. And even though a lot of hard work's gone into the old agreement with the past Selectmen, specifically Jeff Watt, I firmly agree this time that it's more accurate. It's, AHM does a lot more than just servicing the schools and the children. They're servicing preschool, and they're servicing more of the older population. So the agreement is pulling it away from the, which we haven't seen yet, but it's pulling it away from the formula of the per capita at Ram. And the other towns, you know, had a problem with that. And they wanted to, you know, kind of dissect or pick and choose, depending on the services that Ram, I'm sorry, AHM provided. But the problem is with AHM, the way they're funded, you know, they fund half themselves with grants and fundraising, and it's all or nothing. So you really can't pick and choose. So this new agreement really reflects what they do, and it's a broader base or a stroke of a brush on who they service. And it's a lot more accurately depict, and also will be the formula we use to determine the funding from the town. So if a school didn't feel like they were getting the services from AHM, which was in one town, one of the situations, this is a more accurate thing of how it services the whole community from, you know, pre-K all the way up to the elderly people. Things have changed. Everybody on this meeting knows that. You know, there's elderly people raising their grandkids in their houses and stuff. And with this COVID-19, AHM has been very, very busy. So I couldn't agree with it more. They've put a lot of time and effort into it. And it seems like every time we, and Dan can contest to this, we get to the table and we try to negotiate. It seems like everybody's, you know, positioned themselves for a better deal for their town. And that's exactly not what's happening here. This is to benefit all the towns that belong and also more mirror or reflect the services that AHM provides. So I think this is a good thing, and I think this will be a longstanding one, at least I hope.
Open it up to the floor. Anybody have any questions, comments? Hearing none.
Well, this may seem like a foolish question, but Andover and Marlboro contribute a certain portion? It's divvied up in percentages?
It's all percentage-driven. But it used to be on what they called the Ram formula. The problem is, it did not take into account a lot of the other players, if you will, that they were serving. So this is, it's a hybrid between the numbers of students per town and the numbers of people in the town based on, I'm not sure what the census, but it's, you know, it's based on census data. So it is probably far more accurate breakdown based on, you know, not only the town's population, but also the town's youth population. You concur with that, Andy, or?
Yeah, the formula will be presented to the Board of Selectmen at a future meeting. This is the body of the agreement. Just Danny is right, the formula is going to be a mixture of cert numbers and then also possible school numbers as well. A little combination will be percentageed out, which would be more accurate than what we're doing now.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome. Any other questions? Okay, Gail, you're on mute.
Yes, I have to remember that every time we meet. I just want to make a comment that the services we receive from AHM are tremendous. They're very encompassing. And if we had to go out and individually as a town purchase them, we wouldn't be able to do what they do for us. So I'm very much in favor of AHM. We're fortunate to have such a professional organization.
Thank you. John?
Totally agree. They are totally necessary. They do a great job, and, you know, we're cool people.
Okay. Hearing no more questions. Call for a vote.
Aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Okay. Next, please.
Very good. So without further ado, we have our senior coordinator, Sharon Gerard, here with us today. She's next up on the agenda, and this is to approve funding and grant acceptance for FTA Van Grant. So Sharon, I'll let you speak to that.
Okay, so I had come before you the beginning of June with a grant, getting approval for submission. It's a Federal Transit Administration grant. It's called a 5310 grant. The grant pays 80% of the purchase of a vehicle. The town's liability is 20%. And what we were proposing to get was a handicapped accessible minivan. And so we did not expect notification until March, but prematurely received notification that we were awarded the grant for the minivan. So the timetable is supposed to be that we will order the vehicle in April. We won't receive the vehicle until probably October. So the dollars that the grant specifies are kind of placeholders, so to speak. So, you know, the vehicle isn't going to cost, you know, $59,000 even. Once we order it, then we will know the exact cost. And then at that point, we will know what the 80% share is. But it will be no more than what the grant proposed. So the town's share would be no more than $11,800, maybe, you know, hopefully less.
Okay. Now, I see both a motion and a resolution. Looking for clarification. Do we do the motion first, then the resolution?
Yeah, I would do the motion first, and then if the Board of Selectmen concurs, then we would do the resolution that we need to do to fulfill the grant application and authorize the meeting to move forward. Just a point of reference, so you know, right now, we have, the last vehicle that Sharon has is a chargeable car. That car is still in good shape. That car would go back into the town fleet. It would probably come up to the town offices and would be used by one of the departments. Presently, we use the larger vans with the lift gates anytime we have to take somebody to an appointment, which really isn't very cost-effective or efficient. This would be a little bit more appropriate to do that. And then this would eliminate us having to buy another car for whether it be the assessor or wetlands agent or similar duties out of the town office building.
Okay. And also, and I'm trying to think of what year, there is a push, and I'm trying to remember what the year is, by the year 2025 or '28, that virtually the majority of vehicles, if not all, are electric or other non-fossil fuel driven. But anyway, proposed motion would be that move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a supplemental appropriation request for the town match for their Federal Transit Administration Section 5310 program, fiscal year 2019 grant for a wheelchair-accessible vehicle in the amount not to exceed $11,800. This request is to be forwarded to the Board of Finance for their approval. Hearing none. I'll ask for a vote. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. The resolution, be resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen that the town of Hebron will accept a Section 5310 grant from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, CT DOT, and has sufficient resources available to provide the local match for the purchase of the vehicle as well as for the operation of the vehicle. Yet further resolved that Ando J. Tierney, town manager, is authorized to sign the acceptance certification and any other necessary documents. Again, going across, Gail?
Aye, Gail Richmond, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Okay.
Okay, now that we have Sharon joining us, we figured we'd keep them in line. She's on board again for approved COVID-19 grant for the senior center. Take it away, Sharon.
Okay, so the Connecticut Department of Aging and Disability Services received some CARES Act funds, and they decided that they were going to offer senior centers an opportunity to apply for up to $2,500 in funding. They're being very specific that it is not a grant, it is a funding opportunity. So we would make a purchase of up to $2,500, pay for the item, submit the receipt, and they will reimburse us for up to $2,500. I'm just going to read what we can purchase. So it says purchases of equipment and/or tangible goods that help support the center's effort to prevent the spread, prepare for reopening, and respond to COVID-19-related issues. So what we decided was that our fitness room, which people definitely enjoy utilizing, has very, very old equipment. Back in April of 2010, when Curves closed, they donated some of the equipment to the senior center. And then subsequently, someone donated a treadmill to the senior center. That equipment is kind of cramped in that room, and so consequently, doesn't provide the opportunity for proper social distancing. And as I said, the equipment's old, so really needs to be replaced anyway. So we're proposing to purchase two pieces of equipment. Get rid of the Curves equipment, we will keep the treadmill. And as I said, get two other pieces of equipment that will allow people to continue to use the fitness equipment. fitness equipment and meet the criteria for proper social distancing.
Great. I'll read the motion and open it up for discussion. Move to the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the grant application in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for exercise equipment through the Department of Aging and Disability Services, state unit on aging, Connecticut Senior Center Project, CARES Act funding opportunity. Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, is authorized to sign and submit the application and accept and receive the grant if one is offered. Open it up for comment?
I'll comment because having, before the pandemic, having gone down to senior center so often to converse with the visitors, I know that that equipment is needed. I know that what's, what's in that room is very outdated and not good for anything else, but the waist tape. So I'm very much in favor of this. And I know there are a number of people who will be very happy to use such equipment.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Peter Casper, just, I, I can't, I don't know the room at all, but do you need more? Or is this, would this suffice to give you the equipment that you need?
It's a small room, so between the treadmill and two pieces of equipment, that will be really all we can fit.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
I've seen Peter's silver sneakers.
Okay, hearing all the comments, Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to sign off. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Happy new year, everyone.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and Board of Selectmen, next item seven B. This was requested at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting that we put this package together. I sent out some information. This is regarding to the State of Connecticut's Deep Forest Management Plan. Attaches to State of Connecticut's Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Bureau of Natural Resources Division of Forest Management Plan and Salmon River State Forest. Focus attention to page fifteen and forty-one. Also attached are maps showing the area and the emails responding to the state. And I'll leave the rest up to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, I'll read the motion and then we'll open it up for discussion. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to send a letter to the State of Connecticut requesting the trails noted on the plan remain open. Opening it up for people's comments or questions. I was just saying, I read that whole report and actually I was very, very impressed. It was extremely concise. The, the, the amount of information in there was incredible, was well laid out. I think well thought out. As I say, I was impressed and, and in the past, I have dealt with wildlife management, actually as a state instructor. I, I was very, very impressed and I wholly support that document. And I'm hoping, I haven't seen what our town hired foresters come up with for our properties, but I'm hoping it would mirror a lot of what the state's plan is, is discussing and planning on implementing.
Dan?
Yes?
Andy, th- this is what we discussed in your office the other day and we're, we're, we feel that it should remain open and that's what the state wants to do also?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll, I'll confer to Selectmen Collins, but at the last meeting, it was due to the closing of the trailhead at the bottom of Grayville Road just across the bridge. That's the pages fifteen and forty-one that this references. They were going to close a portion of the trail. And there was some uprising in the community about people that moved to town for that reason and to use that for, you know, passive recreation. So therefore we placed it on the Board of Selectmen's agenda.
I, I want it to stay open. I don't want to deny the public access to anything, so I'm in favor of leaving it open.
And I'll echo what, what Mark said, it needs to remain open. That's right down the hill for me, as most of you know, and I think it should remain open.
And I think that's what this plan is calling for.
Yes.
Now granted, there are trails that people have made themselves and those are both ecological, or those can create ecological issues, you know, due to erosion, you know, stream beds. So, but, but again, that was all addressed within that report and I thought they did very well with it. My only question is, I'm not sure how far education is going to go once people are out of sight, out of mind. You know, sometimes, you know, with mountain bikers or what have you. But, you know, I'm hoping people understand and respect the nature and, and the types of damage that can be done, you know, to the biota, to, to the, the ground, if you will, by constantly riding over it and rutting it up and, and, you know, breaking down through the root structures.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Peter? And I, I kind of, I was thinking about you, John, over the holiday because I have, I really love this new signage that's up. And so I've made it a point, I make my wife go with me, I say, we're going to make sure we explore some of these areas that we've driven by like a thousand times and haven't gone in them. And we've done that and we still have more to go and we loved it. And so I, I appreciate the work and, and the forest plan is great, Dan. And I, I was thinking, I was going through a section in Grayville and I was getting confused as to, is that a mountain bike, like sort of homemade path or is that? You know, so it's kind of confusing. And so I wonder in terms of passive recreation, how active folks are that ride their mountain bikes? And do we have an opportunity to consider creating something that's more structured or something like that with all the space that we have? I wonder if we can think about that. And, and I don't ride a mountain bike myself. I'm just, I'm, I'm hearing that they're creating paths and is there a way to sort of think about how to address that and expand some of our passive recreation to accommodate that? And I, I don't know if that makes any sense. It's just sort of a thought that popped into my head considering the extent of which we have open space. So much of it isn't utilized as much by the public as it should be. And I think signage and some of this stuff really starts to lend itself to encouraging people. Because I was kicking myself, I drove by one spot, I'm like, I drove by this place a thousand times, I didn't know it existed. And I was sort of embarrassed, the signs up and I'm like, that's where that is? You know, I put the blinker on, pulled in and spent an hour walking around. And, and so can we be more proactive on these mountain bikers rather than sort of think about? And I don't know the answer because I don't mountain bike, so I don't know if that's even possible. But it was just a thought I had and I didn't know if, if that had any legs to further, to discuss further considering the acreage that we have and sort of doing even more with our, with our passive recreation opportunities.
It's really great.
I was going to say, if I could interject, and again, the, the problem with mountain biking or any type of, of vehicle is once you get down through the root structure and you get into the dirt, that opens it up for massive erosion. That's why a lot of the trails where they're doing mountain biking, they've got stone dust, they've got material down that stands up to that, that punishment far better than just virgin ground. And, you know, that's what you're trying not to do is get it so that the, the dirt is exposed. And as I say, that's where you get your erosion. There's also angles of declination when you get into, in the areas of stream beds, things like that. So that, again, to minimize the actual destruction of, of the earth itself. So, you know, you can design mountain biking trails, but there are, there is some science that goes into it to make it.
I just rather than sort of think about how we, we might get frustrated over time with that they're, they're going after, they're damaging areas that we don't want, that, than to have access to. Is there a solution with the right science around it that can even expand and make the areas even more attractive? So that's just an observation. But I, clearly, having gone to the recent forest meetings and, and, and read the information, it's clearly a science. No question about that. This is a, a marketing, a sales guy thinking, holy crap, this is science. So, yeah, I understand it's complicated and it has to be looked at.
So it looks like, you know, we had this land acquisition meeting yesterday. You know, with the pandemic and people moving here from the cities, you know, one of the biggest attractions is, is the rec areas. And, you know, I think we need to consider, start looking at land acquisition, the parks, the improvement that Peter's talking about as an economic driver, right? You know, because I think it is. You know, the number of people, the sidewalks, the number of people that are walking down that sidewalk by is amazing. It's become like, you know, you know, the, the mall for, for seniors, right? I mean, it's, uh, but I'm so glad, I'm so glad you went there because they are, some of these parks are amazing.
One other thing I would say, and, and based on, again, with John's comments, you know, we are getting a lot of people who never really have had access or been able to enjoy, you know, nature, you know, trails and things like that. Back when I was a fishing game constable for the town, one of the issues I had over and over and over again is people that were just out for, for walks and they were going over people's properties. They were, basically they were trespassing, they were leaving gates open. You know, and they were like, well, nobody's here, it's just, you know, it's, there is a definite teaching portion of this that probably needs to be done. And I'm not sure it could be done with signage. You know, introducing people to the outdoors and, and do's and don'ts and, you know, simple, basic housekeeping things. If you carry it in, you take it back out with you. You know, this is a whole area that I would, I would love to get involved with, if, involved in if so people so desired to try to come up with ways, and, and I could work with John on it if he wants, to try to educate people to, to a little bit of, of the environment and how to, you know, respect it.
That would be great. That would be fantastic. Yeah, and so Peter, you know, like the Grayville, if you go to the Grayville Falls Trail and you go down the path a little bit, there's a, there is a, what they call a desire path that speaks to what Dan's talking about. It started off as a little path and now eroded down, you know, a couple of feet. It goes all the way down to the falls. Grayville Falls, anyplace else, Grayville Falls would be like a, I don't know, a monument. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a special place, you know, with the history and the, and the ruins and so I, you know, we have to, I think we need to have that in mind.
I think that, what you're talking about, Dan, too, in the signage tonight, I loved what the Boy Scouts had done in some of the, the signs in, why I think it was the Boy Scouts in. And I think that signage, for those that care about it, because when I did go to Grayville and I got a little confused as to where I was supposed to go and where it looked like I wasn't supposed to go, I got a little confused. And so I think, you know, the additional signage in terms of providing that onsite education is a great idea. And I think someone like me, I got confused and I sort of just worked my way back to the airline trail. I got a little confused and I'm like, I don't know if I'm, I couldn't quite, I wasn't sure. And so I was looking for more information to try to better understand where the do's and the don'ts. And, and I think that's great, Dan. I think, you know, I, I think those that go to those places, if, if they know it's welcoming, they know it's, the signage is clear and they can learn while they're there, I think most people that would see that as very, very beneficial and would be even more encouraged to continue to explore and use, and use the space. And so, yeah, I think, I think this is something we need to really continue to focus on. It's, it's very encouraging what I'm seeing in, in like the forest plan and being one of the things, very impressive.
Great.
Hey, for the comment? Hearing none, all in favor, and I'll go, go ahead, change it up. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
And Dan Larson, myself, aye. Thank you. Next.
Next would be the draft agenda for the January.
Oh, yeah. That's just, that's still, that's new business, right? I just have some new business at the end.
Okay. So the next Board of Selectmen is January twenty-first, which we're going to have. Due to the holidays, a lot of stuff didn't come in, in time for this agenda. So I know this may seem light, but it was pretty important stuff. So the next agenda is going to be full, just to let the Board of Selectmen know. We get W P C A approval of the contractor for the sewers. There's a lot of stuff that's going to be on there. So if you have anything else for that agenda, let us know and get it to us, but it's going to be.
Gail Richmond, I'd like to add something to that agenda. It's January and as you all know, it's the time to begin the process of evaluating the town manager. So I would like to put that on the next agenda. And I'm going to, at that time, propose some additional changes to update the situation. And so I will prepare all my remarks for the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay, we'll add that.
Okay. You add something, John?
I do. And hopefully, I don't think it will take very long. I have a motion. You know, yesterday, historic day in, in the United States, I, I think I want to give everybody the opportunity to stand up and be, be counted. I certainly want to be. And I don't want to stand on, everybody knows I ran for, for board because of Donald Trump. I'm not going to, I'm not going to belabor any of that stuff back. I don't expect to speak very much to this motion, but I do want to. So here's the motion. The Hebron Board of Selectmen condemns the Trump-inspired assault on the Capitol January sixth and supports the immediate removal of Donald Trump as president immediately through constitutional means. And I will open it up.
I hear your motion. I understand your passion. As far as I'm concerned, those people are the exact same people, the exact same type of individual that was doing the rioting, the burning, the looting of our cities. I find the actions yesterday, as well as the actions of these other individuals that I just mentioned, deplorable. That being said, I'm here for the town of Hebron. I, I really want to try to keep our focus on our town. Trust me, I am not a great lover of Donald Trump. I support and, and back our constitution. At that, I, I'll open it up to see what other people have to say.
Oh, Dan, John, I have a comment. I, I feel the same way you do, John, but, but I'm not sure as a town board that that's our business. Personally, I think Donald Trump's reprehensible as a police officer watching what was happening yesterday and what was sickening to me. And then to listen to the media cast dispersions that they were complacent at it and let them in. I mean, they were overwhelmed, outnumbered, threatened with no backup in sight. They were there for mere survival at that point and to, to protect those that were in there. And i- if you had ever been in a situation like that where I have, sometimes you just don't want to make it worse so you don't start arresting people, you don't take violent action because then you, then you contribute to the chaos that happens. So you kind of retreat a little bit and then they retreated and waited and nobody came to help them. It was, it was disgusting. So that's, that's my police take on it. I would love to see Donald Trump removed, but I, I'm not sure that we as a board should vote for any type of action to do that.
Gail Richmond here. As upset as I was over what happened yesterday, deplorable, reprehensible is what a couple of you have said. But we are elected to work for the residents of the town of Hebron. And John, I understand where you're coming from with your motion, but I don't think it's in our purview. We are, as I said, elected by the residents of the town to work for the residents of the town. So Mark, I guess I kind of agree with you. It's not for us to say anything about.
So, you know, during revolutionary times, town set up committees of correspondence to talk about what was happening in the in the national scene, so they could talk to each other and coordinate activities. I I just want to say again, I'm not going to say much. I think we are the lead board of this town. We are facing what is unprecedented in 200 years of American history. If we can't stand up and say, voice our concern, who will? Nobody. That's who.
Yeah, but we we kind of just did by making our comments in public, public right here at the meeting. I I couldn't I couldn't be moral called by or disgusted by. I I I wish I was a policeman and I was there to help. I was infuriated by, you know, politicians complicitance, being complicit or silent, complicit in their silence or egging protesters on to hurt people or break government property. That's that's disgusting. And, you know, I think we could say that as individuals and it's just as powerful. You know, Dan, Dan's a Republican. He said that he found that disgusting and, you know, I I feel like comforting to know that two different sides, when they see something wrong, could agree that it's wrong. And Gail, same same with you.
And I, Peter Casper, I just to add my comments, I, yeah, I I respecting what everyone has said because from John's perspective, I think, I mean, we all agree it's 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 beyond understanding for the for a rational person to see something like that happen in our country. And but is it really within our scope to be that specific in terms of putting our our position out there as a board? And so I I listened to Mark and 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 Dan and Gail, and I'm not, I'm not sure. I and I don't want that to be a suggestion that we don't all agree that it's something that's disgusting and something that should never happen and something we that we need to stand up for, specifically as a board, and make a very specific comment, specific to our current president. I I don't know. I'm not, I'm not there yet. And and I'm not sure that it's we're in a position to. Now, if you had, if that motion took out a specific situation and talked about, we won't stand as a board or a town for an assault on our on our government, and it became less very specific to an individual and more specific to a scenario. You know, I I would be more interested in that because it's really, you're talking about stating a position that should carry forward regardless of the individuals that are involved. It's really about what we stand for. So whether it's Donald Trump or some president to be named later, it's really irrelevant. It's what we stand for as a community. If, you know, so that sort of discussion, I would have more interest in thinking about, is it within our purview to make that statement? Um, so I'm I'm sort of leaning towards what, you know, what Mark said, I think, probably more specifically because, again, you have that experience too, Mark, which I appreciate, uh, your perspective and all the perspective. So it's it's a struggle a little bit because no one's, no one's gonna argue that it's one of the worst things you've ever seen.
It is. But just just last comment, John. You know, you know, as a police officer and as a police officer, you should remain neutral. And even though I am a selectman here and I stated how I feel personally, a- as a police officer, you shouldn't take political sides. You should defend the constitution, defend what's right, protect people. Part of the problem is that sheriffs stand with politicians, police chief stands with politicians, and that's reprehensible. You represent everybody. You're not picking one party or one side to to take to find allegiance to. I I don't care who calls the police, whether you're Republican, a Democrat, whoever you are, how much money you have, if you're poor or whatever. I'm coming to help you. And and I think the majority of police officers feel that way. I can't say they all do. But that's the way you should feel. I'm sorry, I kind of got in my soapbox a little bit, but I'm having trouble. I'm struggling today.
Um, this resolution really has nothing to do with the police. It has to do with an assault on the Capitol and a an assault that was meant to stop a constitutional, something that's in the constitution. And it's never happened before. It has nothing to do with the police. It has to do with the constitution. And I would disagree. I think this board has every every responsibility to speak for the the people of Hebron to support our constitution and to support this democracy. Because we are at a critical point. I mean, thank God, you know, thank God, you know, he's going in two weeks. But there's been an assault on our on our on our democracy. And if we can't say something now, when do we say it? Anyways, let's vote.
Dan, can I say some, John, John, I get that, that it's not about the police. I I just added that because I felt I wanted to add that because it's an assault on democracy. The police represent democracy and no, nobody was punching the the page of the constitution. They were punching cops. So it's an assault on cops too and police officers. It's assault on everything that 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 should be good about government because the police stand there to protect people.
The only thing I
I swore, I I swore to defend the constitution as a police officer. I raised my hand to do that. So I I just added that. Maybe I shouldn't have, but I did.
As I say, you know, the thing we have witnessed literally all summer long an assault on basic, good, decent citizens by unruly mobs. This, there needs to be an end to this from all sides. And there needs to be constructive discussion. And all I see is everybody wanting to flex their muscles. And if this continues, I can honestly say I see where this country could end up degrading into a civil war mentality. And that's scary. People need to stop cities and towns and states and federal government and try to gain composure and gain civility. So I I do not back that that resolution only for those reasons.
So I reject that equivalency because I I'm against the the rioting everywhere. I lived in Portland. I I know the types of people that went out there. I know what was destroyed there. So I I I'm against, I'm against that. But there's a difference between these individuals who are abhorrent, rioting for whatever reason in these cities and having the President of the United States endorse and inspire an assault on the Capitol to stop a constitutional process from happening. And, um, and it's it's never happened before. And if if this is exactly what you just said, Dan, is exactly why we should vote on this. Because what you're saying, making it equivalent, you know, what happened to in Portland? And I see it on Facebook. I see it on on the internet that people are trying to do that. It's not the same. We have had an unprecedented assault on our on our country. And if we can't stand up now, like I said, and just say it, you know, not make moral equivalencies to to this, and you can't say this as elected officials. Well, I think that's too bad, but I'm ready to vote. Like I said, I'm ready to vote. I feel.
Well, I mean, one of the things, too, is, I mean, this is obviously an emotional issue with a lot of information, a lot of context around it. And and so that, you know, kind of a surprise. And and so for me, I'm thinking, well, we're taking a motion to to agree to remove a standing president, and 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 that may be the right motion. I don't know. That's the motion I'm hearing. And I do I have enough information to do that? I I I don't know. I mean, I don't know that it's the right or wrong decision. I just, I don't know that I have the right information to say we should remove a standing president. I I don't, I don't know. I mean, I've seen the news reports. I don't know that I have enough information. Because that's what we're asking. We were not, you're not asking us to say we want to support the constitution. We want to, there's assault on the Capitol. We're not going to endorse that. We we stand up for all these things. That's, I think we all agree with that. But then talk about removing the president. I I don't, I mean, I saw the news. I saw not as much as you. And now here we are. I didn't know this was coming. So it's like something that feels like we ought to at least spend some more time on, but I get it. But if we do it in two weeks, then it's irrelevant. He's gone, right? So we'll make a statement. But so it's it's sort of kind of caught me by surprise.
Well, I can reread the the motion if you like, and we can vote on it and then we can get on our merry way.
All right, go reread it, John.
Uh, the Hebrew Board of Selectmen condemns the Trump-inspired assault on the Capitol on January 6th and supports the immediate removal of Donald Trump as president through constitutional means.
Dan, I just want to say one last thing. You know, I agree with that, but we we don't have the power to do that. We, I I don't like being engaged in things that that are that all I can do is say how I feel. We we, what is that resolution? What is the motion and the resolution gonna do?
Well, the House of Representatives doesn't have a have a, you know, can't do it because they can't invoke the 25th Amendment. I mean, nobody can. And if, but we're we're citizens and we're elected officials and we have to, we have to voice what we think. And if you don't think that this is true, that's fine. Vote against it. I I don't.
I think I think we did. I think we did. I think we all just voiced how we feel. I voiced how I feel. I I agree with it. I'm not just, my my point is is about, is this something we should do as elected officials out of our our authority, really, to? What difference does it make if we say as a board, hey, we think he should be removed? That that'll make some people happy. It'll make some people angry. I don't care if people are angry at me because I want Trump removed, but as a board, I'm I'm not sure it's something that we should be doing.
Well, it's difficult too, Mark, because if I say no, because I I'm not comfortable within the context of some of some of the details, what am I, so the suggestion is then I support a Trump-inspired assault on the Capitol, which I'm very uncomfortable that that's what it's going to suggest if I say no. And I don't really appreciate being put in that position. And so I'm uncomfortable. I'm uncomfortable because it kind of forces you to say you either want him out or you you support it. And I don't support it. I'm going on the record. I don't support it at all. Doesn't mean I'm comfortable with the motion and whether or not it should be within the purview of the board of selectmen to make this specific motion. And that's, I think, where we struggle. But if I say no, then what? Okay, so Casper supports, you know, Trump's assault on the inspired assault on the Capitol. I mean, that's not a position I want to be put in.
Well, Peter, you can vote against this motion and then make your own motion.
Well, again, I I'm not prepared. I I so then that's fine. I mean, you made the motion and so I'll I'll vote because that's what I was elected to do. But I'm not prepared to present another motion.
I'll start. I'll put a vote, no. I I made my statements. I stand by my statements. I don't feel it is in our purview to accept or decline this motion. And the fact that within a couple of weeks, he's gone anyways. I say no. It's not in our field, not in our field. Uh, no.
I think we've all voiced our opinion here that we agree with the sentiment in John's motion, but we don't feel that it's within our purview to say. And I agree with Peter. No matter how we vote on this, each of us individually is going to have people saying, why did you do it? You're here for this, for the town. Our job is to take care of the town. Whether we're Republicans, Democrats, unaffiliated, our job is to represent the residents of the town. And I think this has gone above and beyond that, no matter how disgusted I am with what has been happened yesterday, today, and the past long time. So I I I can't vote on something like this. I'm not, I'm not prepared for it. I couldn't make a counter motion. I I am not prepared to vote on something like this.
Me either.
Well, I'll just say one last thing. I think this has everything to do with the town, everything to do with the citizens of this town. What's happened is, like I said, an unprecedented attack on on this country. And if we can't, if we cannot affirm that, well, all right, fine. I mean, but it's not unfair. It's not an unfair thing. This is a fair motion. It has everything to do with the board of selectmen because we are the lead government agency in this town, leading government. We speak for people. And let me tell you something, there 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 are a lot of people that feel very deeply about what happened yesterday. And they wanted pressure.
At this point, since no one is really willing to vote on this, I would say the motion has that has been defeated.
No, the motion is not, has to be, has to be voted on.
Can you abstain, Mr. Chairman?
I'm abstaining.
That's a vote. That's a vote.
Gail?
Gail Richmond abstain.
Peter?
Peter Casper abstain.
Mark?
Mark Rivera abstain.
John?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, I will abstain. Motion does not carry.
It's one to zero. Doesn't it, doesn't it carry?
Well, then I'll change mine to no.
I don't think you can.
I don't think it's in our purview. It's not what, I I just think it's wrong. So.
Okay, well, so then a point, so is is a one to one yes and four abstained, is that a, is that enough to carry a vote? And I guess that's a procedural.
It's one to one. It doesn't carry. It's fine. I I'm I'm.
I don't want to, you know, I'm trying to bully you the other way. We're just sort of trying to put our hands around how to best to address it, so.
I think we were totally unprepared to discuss this issue, to vote on this issue. We didn't know it was coming.
It's on the agenda.
And we all, it was not on the agenda and we all had. We all agree that we don't, we're disgusted by what happened, but we don't see ourselves voting for the motion.
Well, because you condemn, you could condemn the actions and not and not be very specific to a removal of a president, but that doesn't go where where you're looking for it to go.
So so what if in the future you want to make a motion that says that you're not happy that Joe Biden was elected president and you think he he was elected through impropriety? It's not for us to be talking about this here. Both ways. I mean, obviously, I voted for Joe Biden. I'll say it. I think he's going to be a great president, but we we shouldn't be doing that.
Well, I disagree.
It opens up, it opens up for you to say, to attack. But it it opens up for you to enter your personal feelings or your feeling about the country, about a politician, about anything into a person. I, that that's not our, that's not our role.
It is absolutely our role as elected officials. And if you want to make those motions, go ahead. But I make this motion because this is unprecedented. This is not usual. It has nothing to do with or even equivalent to riots in in Portland or anything like this. This is a a president of the United States that tried to overturn to 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 have a coup, overturn a a legal election for the first time in American history.
I want to agree, John, but what's your motion gonna do if we pass it or we don't pass it? What is it gonna do?
What's it gonna do? It's gonna, it's gonna do what people in America do. They stand up and they talk and they they voice their opinions, even though they don't have the power.
That's what we have voiced.
That's like saying that we're not courageous and we don't do that. I've done a a myriad of courageous things in my life. This is not one of them.
I haven't said that, Mark.
At this point, we need to move forward. Discussion is over. Let's move forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Next.
Okay. Um, next would be, if there's no other new business, would be the consent agenda.
And these are items which are considered routine in nature, which the board may or may not need to discuss individually. We have at this point in time, I believe, just the approval of the minutes. I don't think there was any tax refunds at this time, and it would be the December 17th, 2021 regular meeting.
2020.
I was going to say, yeah, that's wrong date. Thank you. That's what happens. I just reading. Did anybody have anything that they wanted changed or amended or? Hearing none?
Well, just a second, Dan.
What's that?
Meeting was on Thursday. What date?
It's saying December 17th.
Okay, the minutes say the 17th. Is that correct? I said, I don't have it. Excuse me?
Yes, Thursday, December 17th, 2020.
Okay, all right. All right. I wasn't sure if I had that correct. Okay. I'm fine.
Okay. All in favor? Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Next, there'd be the laser reports. Mark?
To echo what Andy's been saying, the majority of things that have been, the, the discussion at RAM and their meetings is COVID and what to do, how to make the schools safe, go back, not go back, pressure from both sides. It's very difficult for, for the board, for the superintendent, for everybody. This is another hot button issue, and people are getting a little nasty about taking size one way or another. You probably know the personal comment that, you know, being, being human is, is being sensitive to the suffering of others. And sometimes you have to make a sacrifice for the good of the whole. So that's what everybody's kind of struggling with right now. I don't know if we're going, I don't know if we're going back next week or not.
Oh, the COVID rate, what, up eight point something percent? And it's
Yes.
Now you have the new, the European COVID or English COVID or whatever. It's not looking good.
We, we had, we had the test that ran, the open testing for free for everybody. And a couple of days before, it was almost up to 10, then it went down to six. But generally, it's staying in the seven to eight when you average all the days together. That's pretty accurate, right, Andy? So, you know, Andy and I were discussing, you know, elementary school may be safer for kids to be in school, but high school, it's probably not safe for you to be in school because little kids don't go home and go out and drive around in cars and meet and do things that they shouldn't be doing. So it was kind of struggling right now. It's pretty, it's actually a pretty tense situation right now. So that's what I have to report about the RAM board and what they're struggling with.
This is also got to be the human stressors on the kids just with the whole pandemic. I mean, they're not with their friends. They're not socializing. It's, you know. All right, Gail?
Okay, for senior center, the items I would have reported on is what Sharon addressed earlier in her, while she was here. The Douglas Library, there are going to be two more virtual programs coming up. Connecticut and the pandemic of 1918 will be Friday, January 5th, 15th, that is. And the Food Explorers Ditch the Diet will be on Tuesday, January 19th. For anyone who's interested, there are takeaway kits free for coming in and taking one of your choice in the lobby every day. And the Board of Trustees will be meeting next Monday night, the 11th. For the, the Hebrew Board of Ed has not met since our last meeting. But the superintendent will be presenting his budget next Thursday. But one nice item, two students earned the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent's Awards. So we had two students from Hebron that earned those awards, and I think that's quite, quite wonderful for our town. And that's it, Dan.
Thank you. John?
Land acquisition met, and we're waiting on the grant from the state. It should come, the decision should come next week for that huge parcel on Airline Trail off of Grayville, which would be a wonderful thing. So our portions is, if we get the matching funds or 60% funds, our portion will be 175,000. It was decided to ask for 175,000 in this year's budget. I encourage that because I think with what happened nationally, the state is going to get more federal aid, which means the municipalities are going to get more federal aid. And I think that our, our budget's going to be, as far as I can see, is going to be in better shape than it's going to be. And I think we, we had a discussion on how important, how many people are using the parks now. It's just, it's, it's really great and it's, and how it's important to the future of the town. So we are acquiring that parcel, the Raymond parcel, it's a 16-acre, very low value parcel that connects us to Lebanon Airline Trail. It's cheap. I forget how much it is, but it's pretty cheap. I think it's 80 acres and it's $15,000, something like that. So that will, that will allow us to go from the city center and town center all the way to Lebanon, our trail. So that'll be, that'll be good. Racial justice and inequity, we've met a couple of times. Yesterday, Steve Weir showed up and had some really good comments, and actually, he's, he's providing some speakers to talk about decision-making in, in, in housing, you know. You know, how a developer goes through an analysis of how, you know, whether to build affordable housing or Section 8 housing or, and I think, you know, to some extent, we're going to find out that it's completely economically driven, which is, which is what I assumed. And that will wrap up. At the end of February, we do have our, our survey that will go out in a couple of weeks. That's that.
Thank you. Peter?
Just a reminder, Mr. Chairman Vesey asked me to remind the group that the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance is trying to have the Board of Ed's financial update at their next meeting, which is the 28th. But the meeting would need to start at 6 instead of 7, so just, he wanted me to remind the group about that. And he is on the line. Dave, anything you want to add from the Board of Finance? Because I didn't have any other update because they didn't meet, so I don't have anything other than that. Anything you want to add?
Nope. And just what John said with the open space, I think it was 16,000 for that property that we're buying. And, and agreed that, I think the Board of Finance would also be behind 175 because of all the
That'll be brought up at the next meeting, executive session.
Great.
Purchase of property and land.
Great. Thanks, Andy. But that's it, Pete. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dave. And then again, Parks and Rec didn't meet between our last meeting and today, so I don't have anything there. Thank you.
Okay, and the only thing I've got is the Peters House. You please keep an eye out. It will be coming through the town. They did a before and after picture series of the Peters House. The first floor is very close to being done. It's painted, or a lot of it's painted. They, we still have to pick out lighting fixtures to install that, but I've got the emergency lights, exit lights. All that'll be in probably this weekend. John Menard and his carpenter crews and painting crews and cleaning crews have done an incredible job. And I think you're going to be very, very impressed with the progress of that. So I know they were trying to put the pictures in a portrait format, and they were able to do that tonight, but was not enough time to get it to Donna so she could get it out to everybody. And other than that, fire department didn't meet because of COVID. And that's kind of about, about it. So, thank you. Any other, we have any other comments? Donna?
There are no public comments indicated at this time.
Okay, with that, motion for adjournment?
It's 8:25, and I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a safe weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the nice weather. I think we're supposed to get decent weather, hopefully. So, good night. Thank you.
Night, everyone.